All right. Hello, everybody.
Hello, Rich.
Yes, hello. So at this, at this time, I would like to introduce you to Barbara Fortner, who is the president of Narber Civic Association, for a couple of introductory remarks.
Hi, I'm Barbara Fortner, the president of the Narber Civic Association. I thank you all for attending our forum for the candidates who are running in the primary election for Borough Council, and we thank them all for joining us, the four that joined us tonight. Before we get started, I just wanted to mention some other things we're doing in the community. From April 18th through the 24th, we're going to celebrate the earth with this year, a virtual Narberth Week. It's going to include some Zoom presentations, kids' activities that they can do at home, and then we are actually going to have a socially distant plant swap, because it wouldn't be Narberth Day, Week celebration without that. So that'll be in the park on Saturday. On April 27th, we are hosting a town hall that is focused on the bike, pedestrian, and vehicle issues of the development that's proposed at Elmwood Avenue and Wynwood Avenues, and that's going to be a Zoom town hall as well. You can get details on both events at our website, narbercivic.org, and also on our Facebook page. I'd also like to remind everybody that we livestream all Borough Council meetings, as well as the Narberth Planning Commission meetings. They're live, and then they're archived on our YouTube channel, so you can watch them whenever you would like. If you'd like to support our efforts, you can visit narbercivic.org to join or renew your membership. If you'd like to get involved and help us with these, you can, you can go to the narbercivic.org website and click Contact Us and let us know how you'd like to help. So that's all I wanted to say. So I'll turn it over to Rich, our moderator tonight. Rich is our vice president and is, once again, moderating a forum. So thanks, Rich.
And it is my pleasure. So for those of you joining us by Zoom, I wanted to go over what the ground rules are, both for our candidates and for yourselves. We hope to have a robust discussion of issues affecting Narberth, and here's how it's going to go. We drew lots, and Michelle Panopoulos is going to give her first opening statement, followed by Cindy Rickards, followed by Ira Winston, followed by Fred Bush. Each of the candidates will have three minutes to talk. I should mention that all six of the candidates were invited to join this forum tonight. Two of the candidates declined to participate, and although they did submit their information on the website, that's Dennis Callen and John Monroe, so they had an invitation and they declined it. So the four candidates who accepted the invitation are going to participate. After they give their opening statements, then we are going to present them with a series of questions that the members of Narber Civic Association have compiled, as well as those that we have received in email. We have edited some of the questions so that they, in some cases, they're a little more general than perhaps the questioners intended. We will then take a 10-minute break, which we will time. It really will be 10 minutes. And then we will come back with questions from you, the audience. We ask you to submit your questions using the chat function. Since we're more than a year into COVID, I'll bet you that most of you have done something on Zoom. But for those who, yeah, I see that, I see you smiling, Michelle. That's like every day. But for those of you who have not used Zoom before, your chat function is down at the bottom of your screen. If you just take your mouse to the bottom of the screen, you'll see something called Chat. You can use that to type up a question. Your question will be read by Barbara Fortner when the time comes, and we'll let the candidates respond. The, the idea is that we hear from the candidates, not so much from us, the questioners, because we want the candidates to convince you that they are worthy of receiving your vote in the primary. So most of the focus is going to be on them. They have a time limit, a total time limit to respond to questions. In the first section, they will each have 12 minutes, which our timekeeper will keep, and in the second section, they will have 12 minutes. Lastly, they will give closing statements, up to three minutes, and then our evening will be done. So thank you all for joining us tonight. Without further ado, Michelle, you have three minutes to deliver your opening statement.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Barbara, and everyone on the Narberth Civic Association for, once again, hosting a forum under very difficult circumstances this year. But I appreciate everything that you do, from livestreaming to this, and to Narberth Week coming up, and I just want to thank you. I'm running to serve a second term on Borough Council. When I began my first term, I brought to council a broad professional background that included everything from nonprofit development and jobs as diverse as working as a chef, doing IT and network management, as well as a career as an intellectual property attorney. But most importantly, I brought a love of this community and a desire to preserve its virtues and to work to make it even better. I grew up in neighboring Delaware County, and I've lived in many different places, but I knew I wanted to return to this area to raise my children. So 13 years ago, we bought a house in Narberth, and I have not regretted it one day. Narberth is a special and warm community, full of engaged and passionate residents. Soon after I moved here, I knew that I wanted to become involved in the institutions that keep Narberth, the unique community that it is. In my earliest days living here, I actually went door-to-door collecting signatures to place Barack Obama on the Democratic primary ballot, and that was a great experience, because it got me started meeting more and more of my neighbors and chatting with them. I also participated in Narberth Greens, the Greens Group, from so many years ago, where I played a very small role crafting a presentation to then Mayor Grady to sign the borough onto the mayor's climate action commitment. And over the years, I've served on the Marion Elementary HSA. I ran for and served as the judge of elections in Narberth Ward Three. I was a board member on this very civic association for four wonderful years, and I volunteered for the Narberth Food Bank, making deliveries. I served on the zoning hearing board for three years. And there's, there's really no substitute, I think, for this kind of ground-level participation to really give you a feel for and ground you in the values of a community. So then I ran for and I was elected to Borough Council, and let me just say, it has been a great honor to serve. I've taken a lot of satisfaction in immersing myself in the budgets and the details of land use applications, the minutia of ordinances, as well as in the process of engaging with community members at our meet-and-grids and task force work, and in all the many more informal discussions that we have when we run into one another downtown or in the neighborhood. But it's also been challenging, and not just because it represents a significant commitment of time and work, but because if you are like I am, a bit impatient by nature, it can be hard to accept the sometimes glacial pace of government action. And it can be hard to accept the fact that there are some projects that we don't, just don't have the resources to tackle yet, or where the outcome that we really want is not within our control due to legal constraints or a lack of money or other resources, or both. So a lot of learning takes place in these first years on council to come to an understanding of what we can take on beyond the provision of essential services, and how to garner the support and the resources to move those kinds of projects forward. I look forward to discussing this work and those kinds of issues in greater detail this evening. And with that said, I will, I will just say thank you once again for giving us this opportunity, and I will yield to Cindy.
Thank you. Well, thank you again to Narber Civic Association and all the folks that very likely spent their day on Zoom. Thank you for joining us for an evening of Zoom. Since moving into Narberth 16 years ago, I've really built beloved memories and relationships with people, volunteering at witch hunts, as Caroline Cratchit at the Dickens Festival, may I pour you a beer at the Oktoberfest, moving tables on the third, or sticking candy sticks in the lemon sticks with Michelle on the fourth. I've proudly emceed the dog parade, which is quite possibly my greatest joy in life. I send scores of adults in Viking helmets each fall to patronize and support our businesses. And this is all the really fun stuff. But it also introduced me to a variety of people and opinions and perspectives, hopes, and concerns of our community. But it's really been my time on the Narberth Civic, Civil Service Commission, and throughout my first term on council, where the work that will really secure and shape Narberth's future happens. And I'm eager to continue the work that we've started thus far. In my term with Michelle, later Fred, we've done a lot. We've adjusted our form-based zoning in response to our comprehensive plan while meeting the desire of the community by reducing building heights. We unanimously resolved to maintain or increase green space over public parks, most notably our resolution at Sabine Avenue property. We partnered with our MBA during COVID in an infrastructure grant matching program to support our businesses throughout the pandemic. We passed one of the first mask ordinance. We passed the first plastics legislation. We're committed to environmental stewardship, as evidenced in our new EV chargers, Bike Grant Station, Michelle wrote, the Complete Streets Bike Lane Pilot Program Fred championed, and the repaving process plan that we as council developed. We've modernized the budget process. We've explored multiple tax tools to support senior and low-income residents per our comprehensive plan. We've hired this amazing new manager that you'll all meet soon, who will help support council in obtaining grants, increasing communication, and leveraging the resources of our community. It's my hope to use my historical knowledge with my colleagues and continue these efforts. Word missed much change in our borough with new management, historical development, post-pandemic recovery, a commitment to re-envisioning public-private partnership space, and yes, a new bridge. I believe my experience as an active citizen volunteer and then a council member will continue this progress and shepherd Narberth forward into a healthy future. My slate running mates are Democratic candidates who have proven their dedication to our town in multiple frontier roles over the years, regular attendance to council meetings. They've served on committees, commissions, and boards. We provide the experience to lead Narberth into a post-COVID and sustainable future. So thank you all for your consideration.
Ira?
I would like to be considered for a seat on the Narberth Borough Council. I'm a 35-year resident of the borough and a lifelong registered Democrat. I have prepared for my candidacy and service for the past five years by attending or viewing nearly all of the Borough Council meetings. I currently hold the appointed position of treasurer of the Narberth Borough Industrial Development Authority. Through this exposure, I have learned that there is exciting and important work coming to fruition. Continued fine-tuning of our form-based zoning, implementing the comprehensive plan, envisioning public-private uses of space for community benefit, replacing the Narberth Avenue Bridge, examination of historic preservation, and developing a responsible stormwater management plan. It is this agenda that motivated me to run. My experience in facilities, data analysis, project management, and finance at the University of Pennsylvania for over 40 years complements the skill set of the incumbent slate. I have managed operating budgets in IT and facilities and construction projects in excess of $250 million. What I learned most work from this work experience, as well as my experience as the president of a condominium homeowners association, is that strong outcomes are achieved when diverse viewpoints are heard, solicited, and addressed. One of the things that I love most about Narberth is how passionate we are about our borough. I promise that I will consider the opinions of Narberth residents and business owners in the council's decision-making and execution processes. I'm a firm believer in data-driven decisions, and I have been a tireless advocate for this approach in my professional life. I pledge to gather and analyze data in order to make collaborative, transparent, and sound decisions and plans. My passion is to keep Narberth strong for the next 50 years. I am so excited to see the young families continuing to choose Narberth to raise their children, and friends who choose to choose or plan to stay in Narberth for their retirement, including me, including my wife and me. Thank you for, for hosting this session.
All right, Fred?
Thanks, and thanks to the Civic Association for having us here tonight. So I'm Fred Bush. I'm a former professional poker player, and I'm a relatively recent transplant to Narberth. We moved here about five years ago. Just to show you a little of how I think, when we were moving to the area, I actually used a spreadsheet to rank various houses on things like how far it was to a park, or to a library, or to a grocery store, just walking, and Narberth really, you know, ticked all those boxes and was clearly the right choice. So since moving here, I've served as chair of the Recreation Board. I've been a volunteer at the New Horizon Senior Center, and I've been the lead coordinator for Narberth 2050, an environmental group. But I'm going to talk a little less about myself and a little more about the four of us. We are running together as a slate, and I'd like to highlight some of our group accomplishments, you know, some of which you've already heard from everybody else, but I think it doesn't hurt to reemphasize some of this. So if you were to, you know, take a nice spring walk through Narberth's downtown, you'd see evidence of a lot of projects that the four candidates here today have worked on. There are still a few signs of last fall's pop-up bike lane, which is a project I took the lead on. You'd see outdoor seating for our restaurants, community art and posters reminding folks about our mask mandate, a grant-funded bicycle repair area in Station Circle, and the very attractive plastic dog reminding people of our plastics ordinance. If you pass Borough Hall, you might see our new grant-supported electric vehicle charging station. And heading out to the park, you'd see newer, new taller baseball netting. These are projects that Ira helped secure funding for as a member of NIDA. So these are some visible things that we've done, working together. But there are also some intangible signs of what we've brought to Narberth. There is the financial shock that didn't hit borough operations. So despite the economic slowdown and the challenges of the pandemic, the borough stayed on budget last year, and we held the line on taxes. More importantly, there are the people who haven't gotten sick. Narberth has recorded no COVID-related deaths, and I believe we have the lowest rate of confirmed COVID cases in the county. So as I said, when council was debating our mask mandate, if it keeps one person from getting sick, it will have been worth it. And I think that's proven to be the case. A lot that you also don't see is the amount of time and effort that your volunteer council members put into this. Narberth's comprehensive plan is an inch thick. Narberth's Borough Code runs 676 pages. We've committed to an ambitious climate action plan to shift to clean energy. As Cindy said, we're among the first in Pennsylvania to have a plastics ordinance and a mask mandate, a form-based zoning code. There's a lot going on. It takes a lot of commitment to work with that volume of material as a volunteer, and to get into the issues deeply enough to be able to contribute effectively to the conversation. You also have to be prepared to engage with public concerns about the issues of the day, which is an essential part of public service. So as you've heard, the four of us here today have all had years of working on community issues to prepare us for this role. I look forward to working with the other candidates here today to bring our experience, our dedication to public service, and our track record of successful collaboration to Borough Council. Thank you.
Thank you all. So for those of you who are joining us, and perhaps you haven't been to previous Borough Council forums, what is going to happen is that I'm going to ask a particular candidate a question, and after that candidate finishes answering, then any other candidate who wants to comment is going to be allowed to do so, but they don't have to do so. So in, in the order in which your names were drawn out of the hat, that's the order in which you get questions. So Michelle, you get to go first. And your question is, what should be the relationship between Narberth and Narberth Borough Council and Lower Marion, especially as concerns places like, let's say, 3 Elmwood Avenue?
That's a good question. That's a challenging question. I think that when it comes to issues of common concern, it behooves us to work cooperatively as much as possible with our neighbors in Lower Marion. To that end, when issues started heating up with Elmwood Avenue, myself and another council member reached out to one of the, one of the administrators at Lower Marion, well, to an administrator who does a lot of the development work, had a conversation about what our issues of concern of commonality were, and, and had a very fruitful conversation, which garnered basically a connection to two commissioners who are working on providing safer mid-block crossings throughout Lower Marion. And so what I did was I got their contact information and initiated a conversation with them to talk about how we might leverage the fact that we will be an intermunicipal projects, which can sometimes qualify for more funding, to look at how to establish safer mid-block crossings on streets that are common to both municipalities. Specifically, we're looking at Wynwood Avenue, the Wynwood Avenues, but I think it could be a broader conversation than that as well. So I, you know, I think that, you know, the areas where we have truly mutual concerns, where we have issues that we need to deal with together are relatively minimal, but we can learn from one another. Certainly, I reached out to the commissioners at the beginning of the COVID crisis personally, and encouraged them to follow our lead and implement a mask ordinance, and had some very, very, very thoughtful and kind responses back. And I think it's good to keep those lines of communication open. I mean, that's an area where we clearly have a common interest in keeping community spread rates down. Narberth and Lower Marion were practically geographically one thing. But I look forward to really into, to seeing what comes out of the, the potential of developing mid-block, safer mid-block crossings on those streets, relatively dangerous streets like Wynwood Avenue, that really affect their short-rich community and us here in South Narberth, as you know, Rich, because you live here as well. It's, it's a really difficult road. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can come up with some plans and find some funding sources to cooperate and see if we can improve the pedestrian experience on those roads. That's one example.
Okay. Would anybody else like to comment? Just raise your hand and unmute yourself if you do. Ira?
Right. So I don't know all the particulars of it, because I'm not a member of council yet, but I did attend the Planning Commission, the Joint Planning Commission meeting between the two planning commissions about 3 Elmwood, and I was very impressed with the cooperation between the two groups. There was no sort of partisan Narberth versus Lower Marion, that the two groups worked together very cooperatively, and the Lower Marion group understood some of the concerns that was, were being raised by Narberth, because a lot of the property is actually, you know, in borough.
Fred or Cindy?
This damn Zoom background, I have to like hail a cab for you to see my actual hand. So I, I am raising it. A quick comment, really just to echo, Michelle really took the lead on kind of one aspect of that shared responsibility of 3 Elmwood, and I think this is a really good example. There's another really fabulous connection that we've shared with Lower Marion, and I think it's our commitment to environmental stewardship. So a lot of the issues, 3 Elmwood being one of those examples, was an opportunity for us to, A, utilize our EACs, who, who have leaders in the field, and just happen to, we're lucky enough to happen to have them as neighbors, collaborate and consult on 3 Elmwood, and really bring in the conservancy. You know, additionally, both Mary Jo Daly and Tim Briggs are committed to environmental stewardship and worked very closely collaboratively, and in fact, hearing recommendations from both of their independent EACs to give us an evaluation, and to ask questions and raise concerns that perhaps we hadn't thought of. So 3 Elmwood has, has been a good opportunity, I think, for us to, to share our interest in pedestrian safety, environmental stewardship, I mean, even just where folks would vote on that property and work together.
Okay. Let's see. Cindy, you get the next question. And the next question is, how would you characterize borough's fiscal situation?
So, Fred, I'm going to be quick, because, because this is really Fred's areas of expertise. My first Borough Council budget was presented from Shawn Metrick, and, and I think we can't underscore enough the clarity, the organization, the predictability of Shawn's budget, where there are now defined categories and lines. He reviewed our investment strategies and debts. We had general operating capital budgets that were clean, accessible, and made sense. As Fred commented, we have, we have fared financially well during this pandemic in ways that other neighboring municipalities have not. The pandemic, we were exploring and earned income tax prior to the pandemic, which is not possible for multiple reasons, but we have also said, wow, thank goodness, because communities that do have that EIT fared very differently than we did. I am very confident, comfortable, and hopeful for our financial status. Our incoming borough manager actually has a concentration in municipal finance from University of Pennsylvania, so I'm confident that our former manager, Shawn Metrick's, all work will be sustained.
Other candidates? Well, Fred, since you were mentioned, go.
Sure. Yeah, we're, we're in pretty good shape. We don't have a lot of debt right now. We, you know, we're going to be a little bit pinched when we start working on the bridge, when we, no, when we're working on the bridge, when the physical work starts to be done. Right now, we're working on permits and working on getting approval for it. But once, you know, once there's a work crews out there, the borough is going to need to be paying for that every month, and we will eventually get repaid. But there's a, you know, there's a short-term cash flow issue that we're going to need to solve. So there will be some, you know, short-term debts taken out then, but 95% of that money is coming right back to the borough. So we are prepared to pay our share of the bridge. That's the, one of the big things that's coming up. So I would say financially, we have done well during this, you know, crisis, and I don't anticipate any big problems up ahead.
Just to follow up a little bit, and for, for people that haven't followed the bridge saga, the, as, as I understand it, the borough is responsible. Ultimately, we're paying for 5% of the total cost, but we have to front the costs for everybody else. Is that the case?
Yeah, that's what we've been, we've been told by the borough manager. So it's, it's a, it's a short-term challenge, but in the long term, that money will be repaid to the borough, 95% of it.
And what is your understanding about how quickly our expenditures are going to get repaid by the people that have to pay the other 95%?
I think it's probably months. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, there have been some cases where it's been turned around in about a month, but that's fast. So, but I mean, there are, there are short-term borrowing channels available for municipalities. So really, it's going to cost us some interest, but it's not a, I don't think it's a huge problem. Just have to figure out how to do it, you know? Make sure we're ready.
Okay. Would anybody else like to comment? At, at this time, I want to remind candidates that your comments are being debated against your total time, and not just your questions, but you're all veterans. You understand that.
Okay. The next question goes to Ira.
What, define what you believe to be the borough's role in economic development. How should the economic development budget be funded, and in what amount? What would you do to ensure the long-term viability of Narberth's business corridors?
So the Narberth Business Corridor is kind of an interesting situation right now, because a lot of the vacancies right now are actually in stores that, in locations that are under development. The Rickland site, as well as the, the former gas station, the Cadence Gym, will, will have brand-new stores retail there. And it's also the case that a lot of the other retail in Narberth on the other side of Havreford Avenue was recently purchased by a developer, who will no doubt be redeveloping those stores, because a lot of them are in pretty bad shape. So those stores because a lot of them are in pretty bad shape. So, um, I think one of the things that's going to happen is those stores will be much more attractive to, um, to retailers in the future because they'll be, you know, they'll be renovated or even perhaps, uh, brand new. Similarly, on, uh, you know, on the, uh, the Albrecht site, there'll be a bunch of new, brand new retail that will presumably attract, um, attract n- n- you know, new retailers. So I don't know that the Borough needs to invest a lot of its money in that because I believe these developers are going to take care of that, some of that problem for us.
Cindy?
I wish Ed Ridgeway could unmute. We could answer this question together. Um, we looked in 2015, 2016, actually Kimberly Neff brought the Main Street Model for Economic Development to the Borough. And that model with Donna Harris makes a tremendous amount of sense for communities that are in a very different, um, evolution or development of, as ours. Because, um, many of the things that that model does, we already have under the auspices of the N B A. So it really didn't make sense. It was not a right fit for Narberth, which we often find, actually. Um, we're a little town with big hopes and dreams. The model that we have right now, I'm really comfortable with and I, and I hope to expand that. And what that is, that, uh, last year, council resolved with a, a pretty broad economic development resolution to divert funds to the Narberth Business Association for everything from events, it's, it's really, it is very broad. Um, events to business support economic development. Um, in other words, I think it's very appropriate for council to give money to empower the Narberth Business Association to support economic development. Now, we looked and we've had conversations about retail recruitment. Retail recruitment is hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, and it's not appropriate for a government to fund a retail recruitment into a private building and business. Right? Like you don't want your government paying for a recruiter to put someone in Tim Rubin's property. Um, however, I think that we can give that, the taxpayer dollars to support our, our beloved downtown to continue um, the events, the matching grants during COVID-19. But I think the biggest tool for economic development is actually reflected in our form-based zoning and our commitment to alternative transportation. If you walk up and down the streets of Haverford Avenue and you ask the businesses what they need, the shop owners have all told me is we need shoppers. And this was before COVID. This was before, we knew retail was changing prior to COVID. Then we hit a pandemic. You know, we're still waiting to see the collateral damage of how that changes small independent stores. By us allowing informed based zoning to increase density around our downtown, we are providing shoppers feet on the ground that are going to be the biggest healthy infusion into, into our town. Um, and I'm proud for us to see that. Michelle, the bike grant that she wrote in the center of town is one of the ways that council can continue to, to promote economic development. Because that, just the other day, I felt, saw a gaggle of guys who had stopped off at the Fix-It Station. They went very impressively, bought beers from the Greek next door and clipped in and took off back to Bryn Mawr. Those are all some of the biggest tools that we've utilized and will continue to support to promote our downtown.
Yeah, I just, that, that, I just want to piggyback on what you said, Cindy. I mean, it, that, it's, it's absolutely a win-win when we can bring, when we can bring folks into our downtown that way. Um, and I, I, I think also the Wheels on Windsor Pilot program that we had this past spring that Fred spearheaded provided us with, um, some really good data and a good head start. And I, I just want to highlight also the way that that project happened because I think it showed the way that this council, this slate, um, approaches issues. And I'm really proud of where we came out on that because we started with something that was a very um, not council-driven. It was outside consultant-driven, top-down. It was like a five-figure like study of some intersections. That's where we were starting. And, you know, we take a lot of heat from the community for sort of the money that goes into studies and consultants. And, and I really, I kind of share that skepticism. I always feel like we need to be really careful about what, it's very easy to spend money on that stuff. There's no end of professionals out there ready to invoice you for those services. But I think you need to be really mindful and see, well, are we really getting what we need out of it? And council declined to fund that. And instead Fred found basically free expert advice in the form of the D V R C P who was looking for a town to do a pilot project in. And so we did it sort of the Narberth way creatively, low budget, effectively. And, uh, I just think it was really good work and I, and I want to build on that. And I really like working that way. And I really like the fact that this council, um, I feel very comfortable that the group of people who, who like to work that way, who like to think creatively and not just throw money at things and, and call it a day. And the other thing I think we can do for our downtown as a councils, we can make the parking system less complicated, more excessive and more accessible. And that's something that I, you know, we did a parking study. Again, it was one of those very, very expensive studies. Remember, we paid for an expensive parking study about five years ago. And we got a lot of data and then it kind of went on the shelf where studies tend to go. And I started to get edgy about that. And I said, well, can we do something with this? How about try a community task force? To sort of take that off the shelf, go through it, add the component of sort of community, common sense and lived experience and come up with some recommendations to council to sort of rev, I'm sorry, my dog is attacking. Revitalize, revitalize that, bring these issues to the fore and see if we can come up with some common sense modifications to our parking systems and specifically looking, we, we did a lot of, we spent a lot of time looking at the downtown. And, um, I'm looking for, I think we're the, um, the county and the members of the task force are going to be presenting to council probably in the late May, early June area. And, um, I think that gives us an opportunity to take that back up again and see how we can make parking work better for our downtown businesses as well as looking at our residential parking and how to make that work better for all Narbs.
Well, the next question is for Fred and it, and, and, and coincidentally segues into the, the question. What is your view of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure? Would you vote to improve that infrastructure, even if it required sacrificing some automobile parking?
Well, let me, let me start with the first part. So I've been a, a strong supporter of, uh, improving our, our multimodal transportation, you know, making it easier on bikes and, uh, and walkers. I mean, one of the things that first got me interested in, in council was our sidewalks. So, I mean, you know, we've got a lot of crumbling sidewalks. I was talking to my neighbor about how hard it was to, you know, move her baby carriage down, uh, down North Minwood Road to the park. There were just lots and lots of obstructions and broken areas and whatnot. You know, I heard a lot of stories about people tripping and falling on Narberth sidewalks. So that's one thing that got me into this. Um, and, you know, as Michelle said, I, I, I worked hard to get that, um, pop-up bike lane project and I, um, I'm going to be working with, um, the Cycling Club later on, uh, this spring. We're going to be talking about more options. Now that we have that experience under our belt, you know, what else can we do to, um, improve biking infrastructure? But it's a trade-off. I mean, as you said, our, our, our roads are narrow, right? There are, there are relatively few areas where we could. I mean, sidewalks are easy. That doesn't involve any, any real, um, trade-offs for, I mean, it could cost money. But it's not like, uh, certain users are going to be, um, inconvenienced in any way if we fix our broken sidewalks. But once you get into, um, actually segmenting off, um, areas of, of, um, a bicycle, for bicycles. You know, it, it does get more complicated. So we're trying to look right now at places, um, we do have some one-way streets. So uh, some of those, um, particularly, um, let's see, Haverford Avenue near the, um, near North Minwood, that segment. Um, up until Essex or so, there's, there's room there potentially. Um, we're going to be looking at, um, well, the Cycling Club has requested looking at, uh, the area near Sabine Park, which is also one-way, that one block area. So there are some potential places where we could, um, increase bicycle infrastructure without impacting parking. Ultimately, if we wanted to go all the way across the Borough with a bike lane, we probably would have to, uh, to, to look at parking. And I, I don't know where council is on that. We haven't really gotten a specific proposal, uh, on the table. So uh, me personally, uh, I'm probably in favor of it depending on how much parking and how much of a bike lane. But, um, it's certainly, uh, something I'm going to have to work with, with everybody else on council.
Anyone else want to comment? Okay. I ran this one is for you, and I realize that you have not been on council, but what is your assessment of how the form-based zoning code has worked thus far?
So I, I think, uh, we ran into some challenges with the form-based zoning code. Um, uh, because there were some loopholes that the developers found. Um, in particular, the one, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the large one, I guess, on Forest Avenue. Um, there was a sort of a loophole around the height of corner properties, but unfortunately that property stretched almost, uh, a third of the block down, down the road, and they were able to build it a bit higher than expected, especially since, um, the road slopes, um, and the, you know, the, the sort of, uh, high point is at the corner. So they were able to build it a bit taller than expected. And each time that happens, you know, um, you can't change it for that particular development, that spot zoning, but they have adjusted the code to, to, to adapt to that. So I, I think that's probably the biggest challenge with the form-based zoning is that, uh, uh, these very clever developers, you know, were able to sort of pick it apart and, uh, a- a- and play it to their advantage.
Yes, there's some part of form-based zoning code that you favor changing?
Again, I, I think this is the, 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 the thing I'm most concerned about is these areas where someone finds some, some loophole and I, I, I don't see a general change. But it's where they, th- th- this particular property lines up in a way, I mean, the Elmwood one is a, you know, three Elmwood is a great, a, a great example of something that I doubt that the planning board had intended to be developed that way, but yet it was allowed by the, you know, the code. So it's, it's, it's like really understanding the different properties and making sure that the code doesn't lead to these unexpected outcomes.
Would anyone else like to comment? Okay, Michelle, we're back to you. How will council decide when the mask ordinance is no longer necessary?
I'm sorry, what?
Hey, Rich, you need to, you need to keep facing the mic when you talk because we keep losing your audio.
Okay, let's, let's try this again. How will you decide, meaning council, uh, when the mask ordinance is no longer necessary?
Um, that is actually the mayor's decision.
Do you?
Generally, um, so the mayor, the mayor's state of emergency is really what we to, the mask ordinance has been drafted, I believe, to sort of be co-terminus with the state of emergency unless I'm very much mistaken. Uh, so I, I have not thought about that issue. I have assumed that it would, it would probably follow the state of emergency that I could imagine that we would, there's a that would be possible to separate them, but I believe at this point they're tied together.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment?
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll say something. So the, the, you know, in talking about, um, opening of the basketball courts, you know, the mayor has discussed some of her thinking on the issue and basically it's going to, you know, she is, based on what she said, she's going to be taking into account, um, people's vaccination status, you know, whether people in the community have been able to get vaccinated. I mean, I know I'm on the list, but I, I have no idea when I'm actually going to be able to, to get vaccinated. And, uh, you know, once that has had sort of, once, once the vaccines have had time to, uh, to reach everybody, um, then you know, some of these regulations can be relaxed. I believe that's, that's her thinking on the matter.
Okay, um, let's see, we're at Cindy. Cindy, what steps do you think council should take to ensure the goal of lowering the Borough's greenhouse gas emissions per the 2020 Climate Action Plan? When it, taking into account all areas of Borough Government?
Oh, that's a good question. I bet you I can guess some of the folks that submitted that question because they've been working with us and counseling us. So we resolved by 2035 and we hope to be more ambitious in that. Um, to be carbon neutral. I think I'm most excited about bringing in our new Borough Manager who has a history of looking at how to change procurement practices and policies to reduce our footprint. I know in F and A and Public Safety, we begin to, we've begun to look at how do we switch saying, you know, are we, we are committed to switching from um, any gas-powered vehicle, whether that be police or public works into, um, an electric vehicle. Um, you know, we've looked at the cost of the Borough building, um, you know, there's a tremendous amount. We, we've made updates for sure, but there's a tremendous amount of energy that is lost just in the age of that building. Um, we, we're a committed council, um, you know, and, and as reflected in our Plastics Ordinance, our E V chargers, um, our commitment to transportation. Um, and again, I think if elected, that this, this council, this seated council has made that a priority and will work with the E A C, um, and other, of the grassroots organizations, helping us, guide us in what those practices and principles are.
Would anyone else like to comment? Fred?
Sure. This is another big issue that was on my mind when I was, you know, getting ready to join council. Um, so for the Borough Buildings, we've already switched to, um, Clean Power, um, which I encourage everybody to do at home as well. Just go ahead and, uh, go onto P A powerswitch, um, dot com, I believe. And you can, uh, switch over to a, uh, you know, you keep Pico as your electric carrier and then you switch over to a different provider that's a hundred percent renewable. Um, you can also do that with natural gas. So the Borough's own buildings ha- have been switched. We're also looking into, uh, some potential for, um, regulating new development, looking at what we can do um, to encourage energy efficiency and new development. Um, there are some programs, uh, in Swarthmore and Doylestown called the Green Points Program where um, you can get a rebate on your permit fees. Um, you know, when you put in a new building, you have to get a permit from the municipality. So if you, you know, put in a, in green improvements in your building, um, you can get a rebate on that. So we're, the E A C, um, has been taking the lead and talking to, um, municipalities that have this and looking at how, uh, what it would look like if we were to implement that as well. Um, and then just in addition, you know, looking at multimodal transportation again. So the bike lanes, the E V chargers, the sidewalks, these all feed into, um, reducing our carbon footprint.
Would anyone else like to comment?
Okay, Ira, how should Borough Council prioritize projects that have been or will be included in the Borough Capital Improvement Program? Uh, the Borough Capital Improvement Plan?
I'm, I'm sorry, you cut out at the beginning. Who was it?
I'll ask it again, closer to the mic this time. Um, how should Borough Council prioritize projects that have been or will be included in the Borough Capital Improvement Plan?
Well, you know, I, I, I don't, um, have that much direct experience with that plan not being on council, but, um, you know, I think, um, each of these projects, uh, you know, um, has a cost. I mean, obviously we have to focus on the more, these urgent projects like the bridge, um, where, you know, or, or some of the road projects where, you know, there's significant concern in the community that we're kind of neglecting, um, some of the infrastructure. So we need to, you know, hop on these projects that can be done, uh, that can be done quickly. That was somebody there. Um, so that we can be done quickly, um, and will, you know, meet a need that, that, that the community, um, is, is expressing. I mean, this is, um, knowing what, you know, like consulting with our community and finding out what their priorities is something that should drive, uh, these projects.
Would anyone else like to comment? Yes, Cindy?
Sorry, just a quick comment. I mean, yes, so we have to prioritize, obviously, um, some certain projects. But in our last finance and administration meeting, we actually talked about how are we going to develop a really strategic and aggressive grant application program for projects? And we want to wait to do that with our new Borough Manager because she really has such an amazing track record in this space. But Fred Bob and I said, you know, we, we, we really have this fantastic tool that the community co-created in our comprehensive plan. That really should be our North Star. When we're looking at projects that we want to fund in our C I P, we should, we should be able to justify and defend. we should, we should be able to justify and defend how they meet, speak, or reflect in that comprehensive plan. Aside from the, the emergency issues and the things that have to get done. But strategically using the comprehensive plan with an aggressive and thoughtful project management approach to grant, grant application, and then again, moving that and reflecting that into our CIP.
Anyone else? Okay, Fred, what, what changes do you think should be made, if any, to the Norbert Borough website?
I think outreach has not been a strong suit of the Borough Office in the past. So our, our incoming Borough Manager has made it a point in her, in her borough to be sort of very responsive and send out email newsletters, you know, very regularly with updates on what the borough is working on. So I'm hoping that improved communication from the Borough Office to the community is something that we'll be able to see going forward. It's not specifically a website concern, but it's a general sort of email communication concern, which I think all of us on council have felt this. You know, we hear it from the community that it's hard to get in touch with people, and I think we'd all like to see improved communication.
Yes, Michelle?
Yeah, um, I, I, I think credit where credits do, the website is like about 100,000 times better than it was five years ago, because now there is a website that you can find information on. So I want to give credit where credits do. It's a functional website and over the years, most of the most critical information has found its way onto there, you know, most people can find the budgets and they can find agendas and they can find minutes and they can find those basic items. And I think that's great. However, I think that even though websites, websites still have a lot of utility, you know, even this day and age of, of, of social media and other forms of, you know, of communication. I think our website could be much stronger in providing our residents with the ability to sort of self-serve. I think we could find a way once we're all not doing everything on Zoom to enable residents and organizations to self-schedule and pay for their use of borough facilities online without having to go into the office and use cumbersome written forms. I think our permits, our parking permits, our, our, our building permits, I think we do do an awful lot more through the web portal. I hope we can take that next step. I, I also think it would, that the, the website could be more comprehensive, could have much more information, could be kept more up to date. I think it could very much use a reorganization. I think it would be helpful to have, consider having certain parts of the website open for commissions, boards, and even council members to maintain their own sub-pages where they can keep information that's truly fresh and current instead of everything having to go through one pinch point. I think there's a lot of innovation that could happen there to use the website to improve communication. So yeah, I, I, I hope that they can do that. I think that that's not a, that's not something I'd want to task our Borough Manager coming in with immediately. It's a big project and she's going to have an awful lot to do coming in, but it's something I'd like to see happen maybe in the next four years. I think, I think it could be a lot better.
Yes, Ira?
Right. So there was an attempt a few years back to put on sort of a, a maintenance portal called See Click Fix. But unfortunately, the Borough wasn't able to keep it updated. So it was, it was kind of useless because the information was always stale. But having that kind of visibility into where your maintenance request stands is very helpful because it, it just avoids a lot of the, you know, phone calls and, you know, frustration that people can actually see where the request is, but it requires work because people have to maintain it on the backend. We're all used to it from, you know, Amazon and FedEx and UPS. We see exactly where our order is. In the borough, it's, it's a bit more opaque than that.
Yes.
If I can jump back in, Rich. So when I was looking into some information about our police budget, I went through an awful lot of websites of boroughs of about our size. And our website, you know, believe it or not, is actually, you know, very, it has a lot of information and it's very well organized compared to a lot of what I saw out there. So I mean, we may be running into sort of the limited resources of a borough our size. We don't really have the funds to have a dedicated webmaster on staff. So, you know, it's a question of whether it is, it is, you know, how much can we do with an appropriate use of taxpayer money? So I would say that despite appearances, what, you know, particularly in terms of information sharing like our, like our budgets, what we have is, is, is much better than Heffrich.
I'm, I'm not going to make comments, but I've done the same thing that you did. And yes. Okay, I'd like to turn to two specific properties to ask you about. So we're, Michelle, we're, we're back to the top of. So what if anything should Borough Council do with respect to the Baptist Church at 198 Elmwood Avenue?
I, you were cutting out on the first part of your question. I'm sorry, Rich, would you mind repeating?
Try it again. What if anything should Borough Council do with respect to the Baptist Church at 198 Elmwood Avenue?
It's a really hard question. Because obviously it's privately owned. There's, our hands are tied in many respects. However, there are issues of the permits. The owner of the property has had permits in place and has extended them legally, has extended them by providing some additional information, but that is something that the, I think that the Borough Office, this is only a council action, it's a Borough Office action, zoning officer action. I think that there may be a possibility to apply the requirements for permit extensions a little bit more strictly. I think that there are some, some, some points of pressure there. I think that the borough has been fairly, I'll be candid, I think that the office has perhaps been somewhat overly lenient, or zoning officer has been somewhat overly lenient in extending those permits. That's my candid opinion. And I, I would like to see either the owner of the property actually move forward on the projects that he's talked about doing or that the owner of the, of the, of the, of the property lose the permit that enables him to keep, keep the fence up and keep the property in the condition that it's in at present. But as I, as I'm sure you know, I mean, our options are limited. We revere private property rights in this country. I, I suppose if the borough had unlimited resources, we could just try to somehow buy it or eminent domain it, but I don't think we have the resources for that. You know, beyond that, I don't think that there's a case to be made right now for condemning the property. I don't have information that would suggest that that's something that's, that's an option for the borough. And so to be honest with you, I wish I had a better answer, Rich. I wish I had the answer. I'd really like to see that resolved. I mean, I see it every day. I walk my dogs down your street from my house and it passes the short time. Like, you know, it's painful. It's painful how long it's been that way.
Would anyone else like to comment? Okay. The next property that we're going to discuss, and Cindy, you're up, so. How do you think decisions about the 201 St. Vine Avenue should be made?
Rich?
Did you hear that question, Rich?
You really need to lean forward every time you ask your question for the full question.
Got it. Okay. What if, how should Borough Council make decisions about 201 St. Vine Avenue?
Okay. So the question is how we should make decisions. We very much have been resolved to having a community input collective decision on the future of the property. We had an outside company come in and do some consulting. Beth came in and she did some listening sessions with the community. She did some quantitative assessments and surveys and crowdsourced kind of hopes and dreams for that property. And council ultimately said, you know, this is, that wasn't really very helpful. That wasn't what we were, were looking for because hopes and dreams are lovely, but without understanding the, the reality of those hopes and dreams, it was an exercise in futility, one might argue. So we have pivoted under the leadership of Michelle and Fred and infrastructure to moving on to, and I guess I should be careful, we did publicly name this contract, I believe, who was awarded this contract. We've, we've awarded to a new consulting that is really going to use data-driven decisions to look at what are the different scenarios of St. Vine Avenue, including the entire community's feedback and impact to give us options of, of what we, we could potentially see happen in St. Vine. What I do know is that council cannot continue to make the decision to stay in the role of a landlord. I mean, there is a reason why municipalities are not landlords and it is irresponsible to Norbert to stay in this position. I think we've all made that decision. We've all made the decision that it is not fiscally sustainable, although we rely on $200,000 and $250,000 of revenue each year from rent at St. Vine Avenue. The deferred maintenance ticket is so much such that it's, it's just an irresponsible investment. So the decision is we need to do something because this is not financially sound. It was difficult space to lease prior to a pandemic. Now let's look at what office space looks post-pandemic. We've decided it's inappropriate to be in a landlord role. We have moved from one consultant to a second consultant firm to really now give us a comprehensive vision of what are the realistic options we have in that space in place. And Michelle, I should have left all this for you.
Michelle's got about a minute left.
I don't have much time. I just want to say that I think that the work that we did with RES Consulting, getting the vision of the community actually has been very valuable and we, we have not, we are absolutely going to continue to work with that and build off of that. The only contract that we have with, is not for a consultant to do any kind of visioning or anything of that sort at this time. Sorry, I'm just, I'm just a little corrective. All we've done is what came out of our initial public outreach is that one of the things that the community felt we lacked was a solid, solid financial analysis of, of the present situation and of some of the, some of the, the possible situations that we could enter into. Right now, all we've asked them to do is give us a solid financial, financial analysis and economic analysis of our present situation. Because we have done this work informally, but I think it's hard for the community to feel confident in that work unless it's provided by somebody who's a, they're sort of dispassionate, third party, and this is what they do. They analyze real estate. They look at the cost of maintenance. They look at the, you know, they project forward the cost of construction, acceleration and cost of construction. They look at the cost of money, look at the cost of borrow. They look at, they look at the risk factors involved in leasing and they provide an analysis to the community that projects out over, over 10 years to see, is this really a money-making property? Or are we actually ultimately losing money on it? And so that's really all we've asked them to do now, because I think, I think we heard loud and clear from the community that, look, you're telling us that this doesn't make financial sense, but where's the data? Show us the data. So we've asked them to get us the data.
What, go ahead, Fred.
Yeah, I would say that I think where we have room to grow is we, we didn't really make the case for what we were doing strongly enough to the community. You know, we, within council, we're convinced, but we didn't really make the case to the community. And we are now gathering, you know, we're now getting the information that we hope will support that case so we can bring it up again when the time is right.
Ira?
Yeah. So I mean, ideally, we would come up with a solution that didn't cost the borough additional money through grants or public-private partnerships. And if that is possible, that would be great because we could meet the needs of the community that have been expressed fairly clearly and passionately. But it may not be possible to do that without, at, you know, in a cost-neutral manner. And if it's not, then we have to have some more discussions about how to fund the enterprise to meet those clearly stated community needs.
All right. Cindy, you're up. How do you think that council should, how do you think that council should decide which local nonprofit organizations, if any, to support with taxpayer revenues?
Rich, I was just up with St. Vine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then, then this is the problem with Zoom.
Yeah, we shifted.
Yes. So this one's for you, Ira. How do you think that council should decide which local nonprofit organizations, if any, to support with taxpayer revenues?
Yeah, I am, I, I, I have a hard time justifying supporting that with taxpayer revenues. So I wouldn't know how to pick between the different organizations. They're all, you know, wonderful organizations. I happen to work for a hunger organization myself called the Jewish Relief Association, but I, I don't know how to choose whose nonprofit is more valuable to the community than others. Everybody has their own values. So it would be very difficult to, to, to make a choice between different nonprofits.
Anyone else? Fred?
Sorry, I'm just trying to look at the budget right now. I think right now the only nonprofits that we support are the, the Norbert Ambulance, which is really an emergency service that's, you know, and the Norbert Business Association, which is, you know, support for the, for the downtown community. I believe we've, we no longer support any other nonprofits as part of the budget that was cut out a couple of years ago. So I think that, yeah, the simplest answer is to limit it very narrowly.
Anyone else? Okay. Fred, how do you intend to address the needs of senior citizens in Norbert? And by you, I mean Borough Council.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's unfortunate that New Horizons can't use Borough Hall right now because Borough Hall is, is close to the public. It's difficult. I mean, we've, you know, when I was on recreation board, we were looking into sort of passive recreation, things that, improvements that could be made that would be usable, not just for, you know, athletic kids running around in the park, but for people who are taking it at a, a slower pace, looking into, to walking paths and things like that. It's a, it's a tricky issue. I mean, you know, I've, I know how awkward this is, the, the, the relationship is with, with New Horizons. I mean, I volunteer there. I, I helped set up the, you know, before the pandemic, I helped set up the tables and, you know, in the morning after Borough Council had used the room. So I mean, I, I could just say we're, we're aware of, of these issues. I don't, I don't have any answers other than we're listening and we've considered initiatives that can be used to help age in place. I mean, we were looking into some tax incentives in FNA, but it turns out that only Philadelphia can, can use them. There's a lot of things that go on in the, in, in Pennsylvania that are only Philadelphia is allowed to do, or only Philadelphia and Scranton or something. There's all kinds of weird carve-outs. So we were looking into some of these things and we just don't qualify because we're not a city of the first class. So like I said, it's something we're aware of, but I don't have any simple answers, unfortunately.
Anyone else want to comment? Cindy, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'm flapping. Quickly, yeah, I, I think a lot of the work that's gone on in FNA has not actually come to a committee meeting because it's so darn difficult. You know, Fred has explored so many avenues on how we, what tools do we have in taxes to give breaks to senior citizens? You know, there's things happening in Philadelphia that we can't then do in Norbert. Some of the ways that I do think council has really tried to speak to that commitment to aging in place are things like in our form-based zoning, you know, unconditional use hearings, where we've been able to use tools to make smaller apartments, studio apartments, with the hopes that perhaps this would apartments with the hopes that perhaps this would incentivize a, a diverse socioeconomic status, but also, um, folks who want to age place here in Narwhal. You know, those apartments downtown is one of the tools that I see that, that affords folks the opportunity to age in place. I think when we look at things like accessory dwellings, um, my, the first question in the last community forum was Kimberly Busick's Granny Pod question. Um, in four years, I've done a lot of research and thinking about that and I don't have enough time to comment because I have 30 seconds left. But just to say, I think there are tools that we can use, not only with taxes that we're continuing to explore, but also in our form based zoning and then things with complete streets, you know? How do we make it safe for folks to walk, you know, downtown?
Okay, this is going to be the last question before the break. And the question, it, let's see, uh, it goes to Michelle first because we came back to the topic. What are your views? What are your views on the pros and cons of?
I'm out of time.
We're going to give you, we'll, we'll give you two minutes to answer this question.
Oh, see, I would have said something about.
Because it's a tough question, that's why. What are the, what are your views of the pros and cons of Narwhal having its own police force as opposed to having Lower Marion Township provide police services?
I'm not going to answer that question because I don't have an informed enough view and I'm out of time.
Okay. Anyone else want to answer it?
So, uh, so Rich, you're not going to like this answer, but we are still involved in a contract negotiation with our police force right now. So, um, the active members of council are really limited in what we can say on this issue. So I think we're just going to have to pass on discussing this.
That, then I'm, I am going to take my prerogative and we are going to take our 10 minute break now. So those of you, uh, who are on Zoom, you can go, walk away and take care of your personal business. And Patrick, as our timer, can you put the 10 minute timer on the screen? Cause we will come back in 10 minutes and we will take some of your questions that So it does not look like we've had many questions come through here. I, 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 I could tell it was hers without her, without her even being there. Oh, you know what? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I didn't see the timer on the screen, but my clock tells me that, um, we are at nine minutes. So first of all, let me thank all of you for, for attending and for, uh, those of you who have dutifully muted yourself, thank you. It, it's, I don't know about you, but, um, I find Zoom conferences sort of difficult. Uh, but I, I, I think so far we've, we've adapted ourselves. So we can, you can all pat yourselves on the back and I'll pretend as though I saw it and I appreciated it. So I think in, in this part, um, we're, we're going to reverse the order of the questioning so that Fred is going to go first. And the, the first question is sort of a, a, a follow-up to, to something that was discussed in the first part. And that is, how do you think that council is doing, um, with regard to its own transparency to the rest of the borough?
Well, I mean, a simple answer is to, uh, thank the Civic Association, uh, for their regular recording of our council sessions. I mean, all of our, all of our meetings are, you know, in public and publicly viewable on YouTube, on the Civic Association's Facebook page, um, and Civic Association's YouTube page. So I would say that, um, you know, our deliberations are, you know, our group discussions on policy issues, these are, um, you know, by state law, these are done in public, these are done in our public meetings. You know, we have to be very careful that we're not all, you know, if we bump into each other at, um, the Greeks or something that we don't talk about, um, Borough business. Uh, so we're, we're definitely aware of, um, of transparency issues. Like I said, I think that, um, the biggest sort of failure of transparency or not even of transparency was, um, the, uh, over 201 Sabine where council is very convinced, um, that the economics of 201 Save, of, of the current situation in 201 Sabine just don't make sense in the long run, that the cost of repairs are going to overwhelm, um, the Borough budget. But we didn't really, you know, we, we had sort of some internal analyses. We didn't really, um, get an outside analysis. We didn't make the case to the public. So I think, um, that was a, that was a failure of transparency, not necessarily transparency, but of communication. So I, I think we're transparent. I think our communication, uh, could be improved and I think I would, you know, uh, what I'd like to see is the Borough Office in particular, um, being more, um, available to the public, um, and being more communicative. I think a lot of what people's are frustrated about is, um, not being able to, to, to reach the borough or not hearing back from the borough. And, you know, they conflate Borough Council with, um, the Borough Office in that regard. So I think, um, a more communicative Borough Office should help, um, resolve that perception. I would also say in terms of transparency that, um, you know, the four of us are here right now. We are talking to you, we are answering your questions. And I think that's really important for anybody, uh, who you might, uh, want representing you on council, uh, is standing in front of you or zooming in front of you and answering your questions.
Yes, Ira.
So I'm, I'm in a slightly different position than the other folks because, um, I'm not on council and, um, of course they all attend the numerous executive sessions that are required because the matters are confidential and they don't really have the option of discussing those matters in public. And one of the reasons why I'm running for office is because I believe that, um, a fair amount of business happens in those meetings and I would like to be part of those decisions. I'm willing to devote the effort to learn about those issues and be part of those decisions. I just don't be, feel as though in my current role, I can be as effective as if I were part of the team.
Yes, Cindy?
I want to reiterate what Fred said, but this is a hard, uh, this is a critique of, I think, a, a small portion of our community that we're not transparent. I just think it happens to be quite loud. Um, I've joked like short of being naked at our council meetings, I, I really don't know what else we can do. It's all streamed, the notes and minutes are put up. Um, I think there is a communication issue, there was a communication issue, um, and availability of Borough Office and staff, um, that may be confused with transparency. There are times where, um, I have been misquoted by folks that have read something on social media and then I've had to re-quote myself to the person who just misquoted me. And, and I think this is a larger than Narwhal issue of a reliance on social media for information and not coming to the source, coming to the meetings, coming to the source. Um, I, I don't know if there is a misperception of things that happen in executive session. To, to Ira's point, those are things that are personnel issues, there are contractual issues, there are litigious issues that by law, um, we are not required to do at a public meeting, we are prohibited rather to do at a public meeting. And I think that there might be some confusion too. We switched executive sessions from the end of the meeting to often you'll see them now at the beginning of the meeting. And that's because, um, council members said, you know, executive sessions are where we're making the big heavy decisions, right? We don't want to do this often. They're contractual, they're legal, but there's, there's, it's an important point of our meeting that we don't want to do after eight, 10 hours of work, a three, four hour meeting. So we actually requested to Aaron, could we move executive session sometimes to the beginning of those meetings? Um, so we're not tired in making important decisions.
Could you talk to us a little bit about what you do in terms of preparing for council meetings? And Ira, you're up.
Well, I, I, I think I should pass to one of my colleagues since I don't really prepare for council meetings.
Okay. And I'll come back to you because I have a question to, for, for you. But let, let's talk about the three people that are on council. Can you tell us what you do to prepare for council meetings? Go ahead, Fred.
Well, all right. So there are, um, two monthly, uh, meetings of full council and then there are committee meetings. So I chair a committee, I chair the infrastructure committee. That means that every, um, every month I have a conversation with the Borough Manager about what the agenda is going to be for that meeting. You know, then I set it up on the, on the public website. Um, I manage that meeting, you know, so I have to be aware of all of the issues that are going to come up at the infrastructure meeting. So I have a, um, a discussion about that. And then, you know, for the, for the larger meetings, the meeting packets, uh, for the business meeting, those are public. You can go online, you can see what our meeting packet looks like. That's reports from our, um, you know, police chief, from our, our fire chief, um, the, you know, schedule of bills, so all of the payments that have come on. So, you know, often that's 60 or 80 paid. Could you talk to us a little bit about what you do in terms of preparing for council meetings? And Ira, you're up.
Well, I think I should pass to one of my colleagues, since I don't really prepare for council meetings.
Okay, and I'll come back to you because I have a question to, for you. But let's talk about the three people that are on council. Can you tell us what you do to prepare for council meetings? Go ahead, Fred.
Well, all right, so there are two monthly meetings of full council. And then there are committee meetings. So I chair a committee, I chair the infrastructure committee. That means that every, every month I have a conversation with the Borough Manager about what the agenda is going to be for that meeting. You know, then I set it up on the, on the public website. I manage that meeting, you know, so I have to be aware of all of the issues that are going to come up at the infrastructure meeting. So I have a discussion about that. And then, you know, for the, for the larger meetings, the meeting packets for the business meeting, those are public, you can go online, you can see what our meeting packet looks like. That's reports from our, you know, police chief, from our fire chief, the schedule of bills, so all of the payments that have come on. So, you know, often that's 60 or 80 pages of material, and not to mention all of the bigger stuff, the ordinances that we're passing. So, you know, you have to look all that over. There might be a zoning issue, there might be, you know, if there's a contentious housing approval, like for instance, the Three Elm Wood, a lot of that discussion was during planning commission meetings. So you watch the planning commission meeting to see what was discussed during the planning commission meeting. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of preparation that goes on behind the scenes. And yeah, just take a look at one of the meeting packets and you can see the kinds of things that we have to be aware of going into those meetings.
Cindy or Michelle, do you want to amplify that? No, okay. So Ira, coming back to you. If you could fulfill just one objective during your, the next four years on Borough Council, what would that be?
I want the people in the borough to feel as though the council is listening to what they say. That we listen not just to the vocal minority, but also the people who aren't as vocal about what they want, but they have opinions. Right now, we get people who like will show up to a council meeting, like finally when an issue is relevant to them. And then they're all upset that they weren't informed about this issue when it's been discussed at, you know, at the five preceding meetings. So I want to make it so people feel as though this council is responsive to their needs. And not just the vocal people, but you know, the whole community.
Anybody else want to discuss the one thing that you would like to see happen during your, your term, should you be elected? Cindy?
This is a hard question to choose just one. I really have a tie between Sabine and Complete Streets. But if I had to pick, it would really be our our new proposed road paving process says that we will not repave until we've done a complete streets assessment. The one objective I have would be for us to reevaluate traffic patterns. And that's going to happen under the task force that Michelle is coordinating, right? As we take holistically looking at the parking, it's going to lead into looking at streets and like, and traffic patterns. A complete streets evaluation does not only look at cars, but addresses things like walking, biking, pedestrian safety, curb cutouts for traffic calming, stormwater management. That's one objective that I think we have the data, the resources and the knowledge to accomplish during our next term.
Yeah, so I'll pick up on that. Oh, I didn't raise my hand, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll take the other half because I think that, I agree with everything Cindy just said. And I, I think that's top priority, but I'm going to take the other thing that you didn't pick. And I'm going to say that what I would like to see is that we have worked through our goals with respect to the property at 201 Sabine Avenue. And we have reached a plan that brings together, that creates as strong a consensus as we can have across this community and meets as many of the community goals that we have identified, including, and most importantly, increasing and improving open space. In my vision, we have a park that serves all users, including our senior citizens, young to old, and that we've provided amenities there. And that we've just come up with a plan that replaces the income to our operating budget, but that relieves us from the burden of chasing after maintenance on a, on a building that has simply been left to decay for too long. That relieves us of the uncertainty and the risk of obtaining a rather significant chunk of revenue from a volatile source like commercial rentals. And that puts us in a more secure financial situation. And most importantly, also delivers that property to the community with a plan that just, I, what I would want to see if I could do it, something that just wows this community like, oh my God, I go to Sabine all the time now, you know? That's what I would love to see. It would make me so happy.
I would like to see the borough on a solid path toward meeting the climate goals in the Climate Action Plan. There's, you know, many recommendations in that Climate Action Plan. I think one of the ones that's sort of most immediately on the radar is linking up with Lower Marion Township with the Lower Marion Greenway Project, creating, you know, a bike path that would extend from potentially Manayunk to Bryn Mawr. I don't remember exactly how far it goes, but it goes, it goes a long way, the planned project. But in general, working on that and seeking ways to get grant funding for green infrastructure projects.
One of, one of the questions, let's see, it's Cindy's turn to answer this one first. But this, this was sort of a follow up from an earlier question. How can Borough Council address sustainability concerns, including stormwater management?
I think the easy answer is how can council do this is reply, is rely on the host of experts and volunteers we have at the EAC, the partnerships we have with the Lower Marion Conservancy, who have been tireless advocates and helped guide our policy practices and laws. You know, we're beginning to look at, as Fred had mentioned earlier, are there permit releases to manage stormwater? You know, what tools do we have to incentivize green building and homeownership and property maintenance? I have to say, we have such a strong EAC that comes with us with the Climate Action Plan. And I think what council can do is, is be led by those experts who we appointed in those positions.
Yes, Fred.
Well, we actually do have something in the works to address stormwater runoff. So right now, our limit, so right now, if you're doing a subdivision or a land development, if it's of a certain size, you have to get, you have to take care of the stormwater from your property. Basically, you have to show the borough that you are dealing with all of the stormwater runoff from your property. And right now, I think the trigger is 1,500 square feet, if your property is 1,500 square feet. So we're, we're working on changing that rule so that smaller developments also have to deal with all the stormwater from their property. If they, you know, do a, do a renovation or a subdivision. That's really our, the borough's tool for, for dealing with that at a, at a homeowner level is when you, you know, a lot of things trigger when you get a subdivision or a land development. So this is something that we're going to put in place that will result in more projects sort of dealing with their own stormwater runoff. In addition, we've got plans to fulfill a state requirement that we clean up our stormwater. Our plan is to put green bump outs in numerous spots throughout the borough that would lead into the, they would, they would filter the water into the storm sewer network. So that's being drawn up by our Borough Engineers right now. And we're hoping that we'll be able to get grant funding for this because it's a, you know, it's, it's a green solution to the stormwater requirements. So with our, when our new Borough Manager arrives, it's going to be one of the projects we're going to be working with her on to try to see if we can get grant funding.
Anyone else like to comment? Okay, next question. Do you think it is important to encourage moderate income housing in Narberth? Why or why not? If yes, how would you go about doing so?
Who is this for? Are you, is this a free file? Oh, you're, it is for me. Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure. All right. I do think it's important to encourage moderate income housing in Narberth. We don't have that many tools to do it, right? I don't know what the price of, say, for example, apartments that are being constructed in the downtown right now is going to be. It is not clear to me that, that they will be in moderate income apartments. I don't know. I think that most developers who are coming in and developing are probably going to be looking to pricings on the higher end. We've all seen that the price of real estate in Narberth is quite high per square foot. I mean, it's higher than in surrounding communities. However, we do have, we are blessed to have a really nice and large stock of small, modest homes, older homes, lovely homes. But what we've seen is that the incentive for developers right now, I mean, there's so little developable space around here. And Narberth is so desirable because of all the things about it that we all love, right? It's so desire, we're so great that we're so desirable. That is, as I, as I look at, and I spend a lot of time looking at the transactions and permits and what's going on with our land development, I mean, our land use, it's very important to me. I'm calculating that developers are now willing to pay something close to a half million dollars for just a small developable lot, which is like crazy, you know, like a fourth, 6,000 square foot lot, right? Which isn't, I mean, it's, it's, it's insane. And what it means is that you say you have a, somebody who'd love to move to Narberth, they're modest income, they're a young couple, they're just getting started. They can't necessarily, I mean, they may not be able to buy that house that they would have wanted to buy and, and maybe, maybe take up the deferred maintenance and make it their own and improve it over the years and, and have wonderful, happy memories. But they get outbid by a developer or a developer buys it to demolish it before it ever even gets on the market. They find out about some of these properties before they even get listed, right? That is not a sustainable future for this community. And it's based on that concern that I've become a really strong supporter of developing and passing historic preservation ordinance as soon as possible. Because it is the one tool that we can use to preserve our older, modest housing stock, undeniably. So I've been spending a lot of, like, just last night, I was at the Planning Commission meeting. I'm really pleased with the direction they're taking this in. I think that they're going to get some very, very rough draft of an ordinance before council soon. We'll give input back to them. I think we're in a position to develop that and get that passed this year, I hope. That's a tool that would allow us to preserve those houses, okay? And that, that will change everything, that will change the calculus when a couple can come in and buy that house. When, when there is no market for developers to come in and engage in predatory demolitions of those properties. It's the one tool that I think, and we can do other things, but that's, I think, our strongest tool. So I've been focusing a lot of energy and I, I really hope we can get this passed.
Yes, Ira.
So I also attended that planning commission meeting. And I was, you know, heartened to see that the planning commission, while some of them may have, you know, slightly more extreme views about what historic preservation is, recognized the sort of realities of the situation that the borough only really had the, the means to evaluate so many proposals per year. And they really were like focusing much more on the demolitions that Michelle described. And so I actually think there's a chance that what they propose will get passed because they're not, you know, like, you know, trying to change every time someone changes, you know, a million, that you have to, you know, get all these approvals.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll keep working that back and forth. I think there's a little bit of tension there between some of the priorities of some folks on Planning Commission and the priorities, I think, of council, because I think that we hear, I hear from the community members, you know, that they, they are concerned about the fact that a historic preservation ordinance could affect them in ways that it would drive up the cost of permits, it would drive up the cost of a home improvement project. And, you know, I know that they want council to be a moderating influence in that, to make sure that we get sort of the just right balance.
Would anyone else like to comment? Yes, Cindy.
Just a quick comment, because I agree with everything Michelle and Ira said. But even just today, I sent council, there was a Brookings blog, how restrictive zoning shut the middle class out of Greenwich, Connecticut. And to just underscore when Michelle says this is a delicate balance. You know, I think we can all agree, we don't want to see these beautiful old homes torn down before they've ever been given a chance to be restored or rehabilitated. And why we're saying we want to fast track and prioritize this, this is such a delicate balance. Because if not, if done incorrectly, we could find ourselves in a situation as described in Greenwich, Connecticut.
Okay, next question. Let's see, we're back to Fred. So what is your, what do you think that Borough Council should do, if anything, with regard to Station Circle?
So I attended a very interesting presentation from an architecture professor who likes to use Narberth examples with his class. So he gave Station Circle to his class and said, okay, here's Station Circle, you know, go over there, take a look at it, walk around, make it better. So they had lots of ideas for kind of extending it and making it more of a part of the streetscape. You know, as it is, it's a little bit isolated, it's, you know, the, the public space aspect of it is girdled by parking spaces. It's not, it's got barriers, got raised curbs to get to. I mean, one thing that we did do is, you know, Michelle wrote a grant for the Bike Fix-It Station that was put in there. You know, Cindy's talked about seeing the bicycles coming in and out of Station Circle and people using it for that purpose. I mean, we have, we have sort of, I forget the term for this. The benches that are there are not exactly the friendliest benches. And I think they're designed to keep people from lying down on them, so they're not, they're not the most comfortable. The, the, the answer, I think, is that we're aware that that space has some, some limitations as currently configured. But, you know, our, our main priorities right now are the, the larger parks, you know, Sabine Park and Narberth Park, which, you know, have huge numbers of users. And there are going to be major plans, I think, afoot for both of those. So we're open to suggestions and we definitely look forward to hearing from architecture students. But right now, I don't think we have a specific plan for Station Circle.
Look, let's talk about Narberth Park for a minute, because that, we did get a question from, from outside on email about Narberth Park. What, what do you think ought to be done, if anything, with regard to Narberth Park?
So the Recreation Board is a, you know, an independent board that, you know, council sets up to advise us on park and recreation affairs. Sorry, it's the Parks and Recreation Board now, they changed their name. I chaired it at one point, we came up with recommendations. I think that, you know, they, they want to take that scoreboard down. Right now, the scoreboard is not functioning and nobody uses it. I think that and the, the, what to do with the tennis courts is the other major topic that council just has not yet reached consensus on. It's, I think we recorded about $160,000 to fix the tennis courts, which is a lot of money. So we are going to be having the Recreation Board present their, their vision of the park later on this year. And at that point, we're going to be putting some park spending on the, in our capital improvement plan. Right now, there isn't anything. So the answer is it's in process and we need to, you know, communicate with the, the Parks and Recreation Board features a lot of the, the main users of the park, you know, the various, the Narberth Athletic Association, St. Margaret's, you know, people who are volunteers who are just constantly in the park. So we need to have that conversation with them and get their, get their strong feedback before we proceed.
Anybody else want to talk about Narberth Park? Okay.
Actually, Barbara's got her hand up there. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but.
Yes, someone typed into the chat. Do the things that you're thinking of, Fred, include considering things like lights on the tennis courts? That kind of thing, is that what's kind of in the, would be part of what would be considered, Narberth Park?
So as far as I know, no one's proposed lights on the tennis courts. The, the big repair that was just resurfacing the tennis court, that's the $160,000 figure that I quoted was for, you know, smoothing that out and just completely making that like new. You know, the, the Fourth of July Committee actually did, redid the, 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 what can I, Chet Tyson Pavilion recently with new lights, got the lights working there. So we were really happy to see that. But yeah, I don't think there's any other lights that have been proposed that I'm aware of.
Okay, next question is for Ira. How do you propose to balance the Narberth Borough? How do you propose to balance the Narberth Borough's budget? When the costs of running the borough increase? Would you cut services, raise taxes, or do something else?
So, you know, we have, as Fred pointed out earlier, we have a challenge with raising taxes because we have, we want, we want to have aging in place and we have a set of residents on, you know, fixed income. So raising the millage rate is, is not a great idea. And he spent a lot of time, I really credit Fred for trying to explore ways of having, you know, sort of more progressive tax and, you know, basically it isn't really possible in Pennsylvania. And certainly not in our part of Pennsylvania where, and our income tax is very challenging to do given our proximity to Philadelphia. So really, the only, you know, avenue to meet the needs of our constituency is, is to go, is to go hard after these grants. And we're lucky that we have an incoming borough manager who has a lot of experience doing that. You know, it's going to be very hard to raise revenue. The only other thing that's going on is as a side effect of increasing the density, the radibles will go up because these new houses, you know, are worth more. When they do one of these developments, the tax base does go up. So that is one source of income that we potentially have.
Anyone else want to comment on that? Okay, next question is for Cindy. What do you think the relationship should be between the mayor and Borough Council?
Well, per PA Borough Code, the mayor oversees the police, has authority over the police. They have certain privileges like declaring a state of emergency, as we saw in the pandemic. And the council has very clearly a separation of powers. So we craft legislation and ordinance and we are the purse strings of the police. I think it's really important for police oversight to be divided in such a system where council remain to have that control and authority over what funding goes to support police. And there's a distinction in that role of the mayor. Aside from oversight of the police and a veto power, really, you know, as most people, not, well, not, I'm not sure most people know actually, but, you know, council really retains the majority of the control of the borough, particularly in a town like Narberth. I think, you know, the mayor is very much a spokesperson, a cheerleader and supporter for our borough as well. And I, I think that's a really important part and legacy of our town.
Anyone else want to comment on the relationship of the Borough Council to the mayor? Go again, Fred.
Yeah, I mean, you know, she's, she's present at all of our, all of her meetings and all of our discussions and we, we value her, her input on, you know, our decision-making. So for, I think she, she brings a, you know, a great perspective to our, to our meetings.
All right, Michelle, this next question is for you. What is your, what is your assessment of the enforcement of rules prohibiting conflict of interest for members of council, boards, and commissions?
What is my assessment of the enforcement of the rules?
Yes.
Okay. In my time on council, I don't think I have seen the rules need to be enforced. It's possible somebody is lying and hiding a conflict of interest, but I have not been aware of it. We don't conduct investigations where we hire detectives to ferret out potential conflicts of interest. We don't actively seek to enforce that. What we do is avoid creating conflicts of interest. So this council has never, for example, hired a professional who sits on a board or a commission to do work for the borough. We have not done that. We will not do that. We had one member of the zoning hearing board who was a valuable member, but who, who ended up, works for a law firm that was doing some work for a developer and, you know, you know, we identified it as a potential, you know, issue and, you know, he, he stepped down. I think that's kind of the way these things come about. We all act in good faith. We have a pretty clear policy about not, not creating those conflicts. Simply, I mean, I, I would not approve a hire, I would not approve hiring somebody for professional services who is, say, sits on a board or a commission or something like that. I just, or is on a council, a council member, I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve of it. I don't think anybody would. We did modify the rules of council, the sort of operating rules of council to add a section which deals with conflicts of interest. And I can't remember the precise language now, although I did a lot of drafting. Remember it. But it, it sets forth the prohibitions on conflicts that go beyond the legal minimum. And so you brought up enforceability, Rich. I mean, I think that technically they wouldn't probably be legally enforceable because there's a, you know, there's a legal definition of what constitutes an actual conflict of interest that requires, say, a council member or a commission member to recuse themselves. This goes beyond that for council members. And I think it's, it's a statement of a willingness of council members to hold ourselves to a higher, a higher than the legal minimum standard. And I have, I'm, I'm not aware that anybody has even come close to the line on that, so.
Ira?
So the only situation, situation I can remember in the, in the recent past is that there was a, a planning board member who needed to recuse himself from a vote because I believe he was the architect for the project. But he did recuse himself from that vote.
Would anyone else like to comment? Okay. Next. Next question. What ought to be the relationship between Borough Council and the various boards and commissions that Borough Council appoints? And, and I'm sorry, that is, we've gone through, Michelle, that's back to you, Fred.
I mean, they are volunteers who are giving a lot of their time and experience to the borough and we ought to take, we ought to listen to their counsel. I mean, when, especially in their, their topics of expertise. So, you know, I think they should be brought into the, to the various committees and consulted more than they are now. I think, certainly when I was on Rec Board, that was a, a constant concern is that council wasn't listening. So I've tried to make it a point to ask Rec Board for their opinions and they came and spoke to Infrastructure Committee last month. They're going to come again later on this year to give their, their point of view. So I, I thank various members of the boards and commissions for their, their service and we're always happy to hear from you.
Anyone else want to comment? Ira?
Yeah, so this often comes up when we're, when council is voting on who should be on the committees that they have a hard time choosing because we have so many qualified people for these jobs because of the nature of the population, you know, in the borough. So, you know, we have, they call it sort of, you know, it's a wealth of talent here that, and, you know, we, they're really, it's, it's, we can always find qualified people to be on this. The problem is we have to sometimes turn away very qualified people because there's not a slot. I think recently they expanded one of the, one of the groups to, to make room for these, these great folks.
Okay. We've, we've opened up the, the chat. I haven't seen other questions in the chat. So I, I think we, we've been going for over an hour and a half with, at the council. I, I think we're ready to have a wrap up. If, if you have a question that you want to ask, please ask it in the chat box. We really have had a, a wide-ranging discussion of, of issues affecting Narberth. And I, I, I thank the candidates for coming on and, and answering these, these questions, many of which I, I could tell caused a bit of discomfort. But that's okay, because we appreciate that you are, are volunteering to serve us in this way. So we're going to go the, in opposite directions. And Fred, you get to give your three minutes for your closing statement. And then we'll hear from Ira and Cindy and Michelle in that order.
Well, I might keep it a little under three minutes. Just like to thank everybody who came out here to, to hear us talk, who, folks who offered questions and to our host, the Civic Association for managing this discussion despite various Zoom challenges. I hope you can tell, you know, just listening to our back and forth here that, you know, among the four of us, that though we don't necessarily share the same viewpoints on every topic, we, you know, respect what everybody has to say and everybody's expertise on various matters. And we listen to each other's, you know, points of view. I think we have a very good relationship among us. And we're really looking forward to continuing these sorts of, you know, discussions and, and debates on council as a slate. Ultimately, we're here to, to serve you, you know, our, our constituents. And sometimes that can be challenging, you know, as, as Rich said. I think you can tell that we found some of those questions to be, to be more difficult than others. But, you know, it's, it's our job. We have to be able to respond to your concerns. We have to be able to, to listen to your, your questions and, and give you answers on these topics. We are answerable to you. And, and I just want you to remember, when it comes time, or I ask you to remember, when it comes time, primary time, to remember who's, who's standing sitting. Who is here in front of you today? Who is answering these questions and, and who is not? So once again, I, I want to thank everybody here and my, my fellow candidates. It was interesting.
Thank you. Ira?
So first I wanted to thank the folks I'm running with for, you know, asking me to join them. I'm, I'm honored to, to join that, this group. I've had a, a great time working with them, you know, over the last few months. And I really enjoyed them. They're all different, but I enjoy them each in different ways. And I just wanted to say one other thing, which is I'm in a stage of my life and my career where I have time to devote to this effort. I'm looking for some new challenges in my life. My work life is winding down and, you know, my kids are older. And I really am, if I, if I am elected, I will put the time in on this job. I'm not gonna, you know, say I'm too busy to do this. I am going to be fully, all in. That's the nature of, of who I am in general at work and in life. But for here, I will be all in on this job.
Cindy?
Well, thank you all for your time and your consideration, especially over Zoom in the evening like this. Narberth is poised for the future. Our community has envisioned and outlined in our comprehensive plan with a thriving downtown. It's walkable, it's bikeable streets, environmental stewardism, you know, aging a place, all the things that we talked about this evening. And I truly believe the experience and the historical knowledge I bring with my colleagues, Ira, Fred, and Michelle will secure our borough's future. The retirement of Aaron Mudrick and onboarding of a new manager in a post-pandemic recovery calls for council members with a record of volunteerism, understanding of the issues and experience on our boards and commissions, so we don't lose momentum or slow our progress. I regret that John and Dennis didn't attend this evening. I think this was a great opportunity for Narberth to model democratic engagement and civic dialogue. As Fred said, we don't always agree, and I think that's a good thing. I think you want a council that doesn't always agree, but you respect one another's opinions. You understand whose has the strengths and who has the weaknesses and we, we have that balance. I wish John or Dennis had brought some of their community concerns to one of our many boards or committees or council members. So we could have shared information and helped to problem solve. And I just want to welcome, I welcome all, any, any and all opportunity to hear neighbors' ideas about the future you envision. And our slate is going to invite you specifically to come hang and share those ideas with us this Saturday at Station Circle from four to six. So please grab a drink, grab some ice cream, grab your takeout food and come visit us this Saturday to share your thoughts. Thanks for your consideration.
Michelle?
Ah, okay, well, um, I don't have, there's not much I can add to what my, my three esteemed running mates have already said. So please do join us this Saturday. I just want to thank the Civic again for this opportunity to be here. And everybody who stayed on this Zoom, you're amazing. You are truly committed and thank you for listening and thank you for caring. And do reach out anytime with your thoughts and ideas for the community to any of us. I just, I just want to reiterate that I, I mean, I think these three folks that I'm running with, Fred, Ira, and Cindy, I, I have this enormous respect for all of them and I think they demonstrated tonight. And I hope I was able to show you as well that we are knowledgeable and experienced and we truly care about this community. We will, we will serve you with integrity if you will go out and vote for us. And regardless, don't forget to go and vote. And you can still vote by mail. And I think you can still order your mail-in ballot. So don't forget to do that. We've got it on our website, narberthforward.org, all the information. So don't forget to vote. I hope you vote for us. And I'm a little tired and loopy. I just think that you want me to stop talking and everybody wants to say goodnight and get off of Zoom. That's what I think. And Dan Yody's like, yeah, it's Miller, it's Miller time.
It, it, it is, it's, it's the Greeks' time. So.
If only.
What a great closeout, a toast from Dan. That was a great way to end the Zoom. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. We, we're going to end the recording. If, if, if people want to hang for a few minutes, you can, you can do that. But I'm going to close, I'm going to close the, the recording now.